Hello, and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. My name is Chris Dodson, and with us today is Philip Choate, our sign language interpreter. Due to the length of today's agenda, please go to the Legislative Information Center via the City Council website to read the bills that are up for preliminary vote. You can find the link in the business dropdown on the city Pittsburgh PA.gov website. Click Legislative Information Center. From there, click the red launch button. This will take you to the council meeting calendar. Find the meeting for today's date and click on Agenda. The meeting agenda should open with all the bills for discussion today. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you start by calling the roll? Yeah, but we can call the roll. We have five here. Let's do it.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President, well, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Five members present.
Okay, so we do have five members present. Let's go into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council, of course, will have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to remind everyone that our rules of council here are very clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time or could at another time come before our council. We do not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. I ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts, and when the red light comes on, you must relinquish the podium. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Torre Ronaldin Miller, Bloomfield, in Pittsburgh, Little Italy. Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020. Website, main website is globalintelligencesociety.org. I'm a member of the American Chemical Society, ADELA, highest of the high, right? The Pittsburgh Post-Gazette is now publishing issues three times a week. I think it's dying.
Yes.
Soon will be dead, in my view. That's good news. Better news, as an alternative, the CGSIIGIS Pittsburgh Local Worldwide Global Gazette, a mouthful coming in 2020, which we intend to be linking elected neighborhood units here and neighborhoods worldwide. A concern of this council is carbon. On 22 October 2019, District Representative Seven Gross offered a will of counsel. Citizen critique was forbidden, supporting the U.S. House of Representatives Bill 763-2019, the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, which imposes a tax on carbon emitters, which would include individuals and institutions. Ms. Gross wrote, "Effectuate this carbon fee approach." Effectuate, okay. I wrote an email, sent an email to Ms. Gross on the same day to invite her to introduce a carbon-based bill for the city. She didn't respond to that email. I think that this is a failure Janus like to effectuate. On 22 November, 12th November 2019, Mr. Paduto affirmed this anti-carbon position in the will of counsel of Ms. Gross, stating that, quote, "Climate change is the greatest challenge of our lifetime." You know, I'm glad to know that God is behind this door. When did he become omniscient? I disagree with this. I think that it is ensuring the rights of our children to choose and control their biogenetic and artificial clonal sex gen identity. Mr. Paduto, al contraire, affirmed yet in that presentation, you know, a pro-carbon position. And I think this is a two-face. This is Trump-like. No to pro-carbon and yes to the carbon, stating that we need to do more paving. Now, anybody in this city knows that the piles of black stuff that are on the side of our streets is asphalt. So the main way that is being done is to use carbon. And when the machines do it, they emit carbon and methane into the atmosphere.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Appreciate you being here. May we have our next speaker, please? Okay, good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Les Ludwig. I live in Squirrel Hill. And I'm a recent convert from being an independent to being a Democrat. So the outcome of the national election that's forthcoming is of great significance to me with eight grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. We've often heard the joke, and it's not a joke, that the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. Is that going to be the downfall of our party's effort to replace Trump if indeed he survives impeachment? So yesterday, I was in a store and was waited on to be helped by a young lady of African-American descent, and she knew how to use a computer. She was an expert. She went and looked through every retail store looking for non-slip bath mats so that I shouldn't fall again getting out of the shower. I had a big egg on my head. But she couldn't convert or understand mathematics, simple mathematics of inches and feet. And what did it say to me? It said that we are failing if we don't correct these types of educational mistakes because we have to rise together. We can't have two levels of society, those who are the rich and get richer, and those the poor who get left behind. We have to stop this, and we have to make it known nationally in our presentations that this is the position of the national party, and I don't hear it. And therefore, I fear for the outcome of the election, that there will still be, if he runs again, that there will still be a good chance that we'll see Mr. Trump for another four years. That's a disaster. So you have to turn somewhere to express it. So where do you go? Someplace where you're in front of television that maybe, God forbid, someone will hear and even listen. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ludwig. Appreciate it. May we have our next speaker? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Jivon F. Brown. Yesterday, I came, and Mr. Dr. Miller was leaving. I was getting on the elevator as he was getting off, so I didn't get to speak yesterday. Yesterday was my daughter, my youngest daughter's birthday, unique. Her name is unique because my husband delivered her 35 years ago. Now, that little, the little children that I bring here, my grandchildren, and you know, the little one is five, that's the light-complected one. Her name is Alexis. She wrote her mother a card. Look at this. It says, "I love you." And look at the, instead of the O is a heart, above her mother is a heart. Isn't this, see, I got artists. All of them draw. I teach them. They have to get busy. They have to keep busy. But anyway, I'm sometime very disappointed when I come down here, and sometimes I don't want to come. I really don't. I don't want to look at you because I don't like what you're doing to this whole city, not just me. You must understand, I've been coming down here for so many years. I know the little things that you're doing. The people don't see it. See, they don't understand sometime why I'm sitting there and I'm saying, "Look at these." And they're taking our money. See, I am saying this because I know you take care of our money, but we can't tell you how to do it, but you don't know how. You know how to take care of your neighborhood. Each neighborhood is different. You know that. See, we can't get a bus from the top of the hill. And Mr. Lavelle, you please call the bus company, because if they can take McKnight Road, and they're making two bus stops there, you have our seniors, the K.D. Williams fought for, to build that apartment, and we can't get down to the bottom of the hill to the hospital. They must go to town to get to the hospital. That's disgusting. I can do it. That's why I keep coming and fussing. Mm-hmm. Now, he got nervous of the grown. He need to listen, because you know what? He's acting like Trump. You know what? Some of the Trump, some of the stuff that Trump did, just like he did when he hired her while we were on vacation, none of us knew. The citizens should have known. I'm fighting for Kim. She was here 29 years, got a college degree. And Mary Beth with her high school education or whatever she had, who used to, didn't, see, the black people weren't even allowed to laugh when Mary Beth was across the hall. I see that. This place is treated, we're treated like we're on a plantation, a slave plantation. Him, when I was making faces, you remember, he was looking. If I say yes, the policeman runs back there. I told him, "Get away from me. It's not a police state." I can make some sounds.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yes. I'm glad you liked it.
May we have our next speaker, please? Is there anyone else wishing to address council this morning? Okay, seeing no further speakers, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. We did call the roll, but I would like to reflect that we have been joined by council members Gross and Lavelle. If I may ask the indulgence of members, I'd like to take the supplemental papers under Finance, 2305 and 2306, first, because I think they'll be easy, and then I'd like to go into our Public Safety Committee on page eight and take 2285, since we do have our EMS chief here, and I'd like to let him get back to work as quickly as possible. So, Madam Clerk, may we have, under Finance and Law Committee with Reverend Burgess as our chair, would you please read 2305 and 2306 together?
Bill 2305, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Finance to Enter Into a Grant Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of Libraries to Receive Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund grant monies in the amount of $750,000 that will be used by the Carnegie Library to renovate the library for the blind and physically handicapped. Bill number 2306, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to Enter Into a Corporation Agreement with the Carnegie Library Regarding the Library's Use of the $750,000 in Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Grant Monies for the Carnegie Library to Renovate the Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please? A move.
Second.
Do we have discussion? Great. We do, councilwoman?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, great. We have someone here if you wish to have Carlin come up?
No.
Oh. I thought she raised her hand.
Uh-uh.
I was just scratching my nose.
No, are we good?
I just don't know, where's this park?
It's not a park, councilwoman. It's receiving, no, we're not, no, we're on the library bills.
Library.
We're just, it's to receive Monday, Monday Keystone Grant, which we've done on all of our renovations, to renovate the library for the blind and physically handicapped.
She just answered my question.
You okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, good. Then, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Thank you very much for your consideration. The bill's passed. Thanks for being here, Carlin. I appreciate your help. And then, if we may jump to our Public Safety Committee with Councilman Lavelle as our chair, under New Papers, if we could read 2285 so we could have the chief be on his way. Thanks.
Bill 2285, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with International Trauma Life Support Pennsylvania Chapter for Trauma Life Support Training Services for the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services at a sum not to exceed $6,750 and providing for the payment of costs thereof.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Do we have discussion for members? Pretty easy. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? We pass. Thanks, Chief, for being here. Appreciate your time this morning. Okay, now, if we could go back to the deferred papers under Finance and Law, and we'll begin to take the budget bills. Madam Clerk, may we please have Bill 2225 first?
Bill 2225, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $150,000 from the Office of Management and Budgets Operating Budget to the Workforce Development Fund, budget year 2019.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? To approve. Second. Do we have discussion? We have people from Finance here for the bills.
I thought this one was going to be held one week by the administration.
I have nothing asking for a hold from the administration.
Okay. Do you have any on any other one?
I do not. We are going to hold budget bills, which is tradition.
Councilwoman is correct. This is not, if I may.
Yeah, please.
This is a bill that is part of the task force that councilwoman has a bill that was introduced this week. All three bills will come up next week as part of a workforce task force that's going to be introduced. So this bill's, I'll make a motion to hold one week.
Second.
If we can hold the motion, because we have further discussion, please.
Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Gross.
I'm sorry, is this also part of the bill that I asked about, the cooperative agreement with the nonprofit that had been on the task force?
Partner for work.
Yeah.
Partner for work.
Yes.
Okay. And so I also had talked with the administration, and they're looking forward to getting us information, and I look forward to seeing it, so.
Okay, so then I'll entertain the councilwoman's motion to hold one week and a second by Councilman O'Connor?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Okay, we have a one-week hold. We're going to go under New Papers. We're going to go into the budget bills. We are going to read Bills 2263, 64, and 65 together, please.
Bill 2263, Resolution Making Appropriating to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public's Business of the City and For Meeding the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2020. Bill number 2264, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget, the 2020 CDBG Program, and the 2020 Through 2025 Capital Improvement Program. Bill number 2265, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City for the 2020 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation Thereof, and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I need a motion, please. To approve. Okay, I need a second, please. Okay, very brief discussion. Bill, just walk me through this again. Our tradition is to hold these bills as we go through the budget process. What I'm confused about is the length of time that the motion should be to hold.
Bill Urbanic, City Council Budget Director. These bills should actually be able to come up at each Standing Committee meeting to allow for comment or amendments during that, during the period of time. We open the budget hearing process. This allows for plenty of opportunities to be able to make changes and such.
Sure.
So we do keep it open, so it should be held week to week throughout the budget process.
Okay, so then, what I'm going to ask for then is the motion to hold it one week?
Motion to hold one week. Second.
Okay, and we have a second from Councilwoman Harris, and that motion is on 2263, 64, and 65. All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? We're good on those bills. We are then going to read Bills 2266, 67, and 68. There will be an amendment proposed for 68, but then we are going to move these bills forward if it's the wish of the council. So, Madam Clerk, could we have the purpose of 66, 67, and 68, please?
Bill 2266, Resolution Authorizing the City to Participate in Applicable Corporative Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supplies, Services, or Construction as Authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Corporation Law for the 2020 Fiscal Year. Bill number 2267, Resolution Authorizing City Council to Approve Intra-Departmental Transfers Throughout the 2020 Fiscal Year. Bill number 2268, Resolution Providing for the Leading of Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments, and the Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing, Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Servicing of City Buildings and Facilities, and for Any Miscellaneous Services in and for any City Departments, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof for the 2020 Fiscal Year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve. Discussion.
And a second, right? Councilwoman, can we offer up the amendment on 68 so we can discuss them in their entirety? So would you offer that amendment, please?
Ah, so moved.
Okay, we have an amendment on the table to amend. It's technical in nature, 2268. I have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions? Okay, the bills are amended, presented as a package, and Councilwoman Harris has the floor.
Go ahead, Bill. On each one.
These are annual authorization bills, two of them, of all three of them, actually. One is for the ability for the city to be...
You want to say what number?
Yes. 2266 gives the ability for the city to enter into intergovernmental cooperation contracts, including purchasing on Co-Stars, and work in cooperation with the county and other COGS where we are able to find maybe the lowest cost for commodities and services. 2267 allows us to approve the intra-departmental transfers, which we have a couple today, which you're well familiar with. If you would like explanation, me to explain to the public, I'll be glad to do that.
That's okay.
The third one is the one that's amended. This bill allows for small purchasing under $10,000. Now, it's now under $3,000 opposed to the $10,000. That's at the request of the administration, who want the resolution to reflect their policy, which is much more stringent than the $10,000.
Okay, and all of these will have to be approved by council, correct?
Yes, you're, well, you're giving an authorization to allow them to...
Up to $3,000.
That's correct.
Okay. Where does it actually say the $3,000 bill? I, maybe I'm...
It's in the piece.
Okay, I read it. I just, I must have overlooked it.
Oh, we're going from 10 to 3? Forgive me.
Yes.
Okay. You had me nervous there for a minute.
It's more, it's more stringent.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm good, then.
I'm not seeing the $3,000.
Councilwoman, it's the amendment.
Oh, I see. You have $103,000. You changed it to $3,000.
It's it, right.
Oh, okay.
From $10,000 to $3,000.
The three.
Okay.
And that's reflected in their policies. We had it allowing for phone bids and such, to allow the parties to do it themselves. Now they're all good for O and B. So it makes...
That was the part that I had a problem with. I didn't quite understand, but, okay.
You good, councilwoman?
Good.
Okay, so we are going to vote through then. 66, 67, and 68 is amended. We have a motion in a second on the floor. All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? They pass. Thank you. Next, we're going to read 2274, please, Madam Clerk.
2274, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement Extension with B2G Now and Providing for the Payment Thereof at a Cost Not to Exceed $59,636.
May I have a motion to approve, please? Motion, I should say, I'm sorry. May I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second on the floor. Do you wish discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Harris wishes discussion. You have the floor. We do have people here. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Good.
If you would please identify yourselves for our record, your position with the city, and Councilwoman Harris has the floor.
Yes, sir. Oliver Beasley, Policy Analyst with the Office of Equity, and I do the policy work for various things for Equity for the Administration, including the URC Department.
Chuck Darm, URC Coordinator. I do the URC Commission.
I would hope you would be doing it for the whole city, not just for the mayor's office.
Correct.
Okay. What you said, just for mayor's office. Okay, do you want to explain?
Yeah, so the B2G Now system is, I believe we adopted it in 2016. I believe it came from Councilman Lavelle's office that legislation to, it is just software for contract compliance.
I couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah, so all the contracts that the city of Pittsburgh does that are above $50,000 professional service or above $250,000 construction comes to the URC Department for review, and before comes the council.
Okay, thank you.
May I, further discussion from anyone else?
This is MBW, you're not this.
Yes, Councilperson.
Then I just have one brief question. Is an extension, what is the time of the extension?
Three years.
Three years. Thank you very much. At the cost, a total cost of $59,000, not 59 per year.
Total cost not to exceed.
Great. I'm good, thanks. Anything else from members? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions?
Thank you.
We're good. Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, may we have the purpose of 2275, please?
Bill 2275, Resolution Appointing Individuals Funded Department of Finance to Represent the City as Delegates to the Tax Collection Committee to be Established for the Allegheny Central Tax Collection District pursuant to the Requirements of Act 32 of 2008.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Do we, is discussion for members? We have Councilwoman Harris who wishes discussion. Do we have someone here for 2275, please? We do. Morning, Margaret, welcome. Morning.
Morning.
Margaret, Director of Finance.
Thank you.
Drew Dyer, Supervisor of Property Management.
Fran Piski, Supervisor of Tax Compliance.
Thank you. Go ahead, Margaret. Are these going to be basically the same as last year?
What we're doing is we're appointing new members to the Allegheny County Tax Collection Committee. This committee has oversight on Jordan Tax Collection, which collects our earned income tax, and every year we do an audit. We meet with them. We meet quarterly as a committee and just, you know, we monitor the payments that come in. What happened is we had two individuals. One resigned and moved to another job, and another one retired. So we needed to appoint two more city members to the committee.
Okay, and that's not done as of this time?
No, it would be done by this resolution.
Okay.
The appointees would be Drew Dyer, who's been our supervisor of our tax collection and payments for over, what, 30 years?
Nine years.
30 years. And Fran Piski, she's our supervisor, manager in our tax compliance office, who daily, you know, deals with registration business at end of our department.
So any questions that would come up with Jordan? We could talk to any of you three.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Just curious, how many other, you're representing the city, and then there are other representatives from the other tax-collecting bodies?
School district.
Yeah.
Mal Oliver in the city.
Right. And do they each have three representatives?
They have, I think the school district has four.
Okay.
The school district, and when voting, the school district has the majority of the Mal Oliver in the city.
Right. And do they each have three representatives?
They have, I think the school district has four.
Okay.
The school district, and when voting, the school district has the majority of the vote.
Right.
But we still have a, you know, a say, you know, but majority of the time, they have, they rule over us. Their vote rules over our vote.
And what kind of, I mean, I understand very generally what you do, but can you provide an example of how you assess this, or issues that might come up that you need to vote on or resolve?
Anytime the city has any issues, normally what we do is we hold to our quarterly meeting. And we have, we discuss problems we've had with our payments coming in from Jordan, if we get any complaints from, you know, constituents or whatever from, you know, about Jordan. We monitor their security to make sure everything is up to date with that, you know, with the payments and so forth. We do a yearly audit, which is required. We do RFP for a audit professional service agreement, and we have them audit, you know, Jordan. And then, like I said, once a year, we have Jordan come into the meeting and go over any questions or any information that we want to discuss.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Councilman Coghill, thank you first, and then Councilwoman Harris.
Quick, you forget. Margaret, Jordan Tax Service, how long have they been collecting taxes for us? Any idea?
Years.
2010. 2010, yeah.
2010. And how, how does that look? I mean, what, do they work off a percentage of what they collect, or do we have a flat contract fee with them?
They get a 1% collection fee.
1% collection fee, so it-
And the collections are very good.
That explains why they're so aggressive at getting their, you know.
Collections with the earned income is very good.
Yeah, right, right. And that is shared by the school board, us, and?
When you say share, we-
Well, when I say-
They collect for the city and the schools.
Okay, so they get 1% from the school board for taxes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and same amount for the city?
Same for the city.
Yeah. And that's it, those two entities?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Have Councilwoman Harris followed by Councilwoman Gross.
I wanted to know two things. What is the average of that 1%, both for, you know, for school district and for City of Pittsburgh? Or could you give me those numbers?
That's the fee that we pay them for collecting it.
Right.
Comes off the top of our collections.
For last year, or the year before? I'm looking for ballpark.
You want the amount that we paid?
Ballpark.
Okay. I'll have to send that to you.
And if you know, for the school district? The other question is, do you know who's sitting for the school district now?
It's Ron Joseph. There's two other, there's three others. I don't have their name offhand. But Ron Joseph is the chair, and one of our employees that retired is the, was the co-chair. And I'm looking at, you know, nominating Fran as our co-chair of the committee. But I can send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. So Jordan has been on this contract since 2010, but, and this is a little bit, it's related, but not entirely, to this just collection of earned income taxes. We have them under a variety of contracts, because they're not only collecting delinquencies on earned income tax. So this is not delinquencies, this is just collecting all the earned income tax?
This is for the earned income tax, yes.
I'm just trying to keep it straight, right? And then we have separate agreements with them where they're collecting delinquencies.
Real estate.
And so that's real estate, and that is, applies to both property tax delinquencies and water building delinquencies. Is that, are those two that PWSA, under the same contract, or different ones?
My understanding, the contract is no longer in effect with PWSA.
Okay, that's true. Thank you for reminding me, because we've been struggling with whether or not we should be under contract, so thank you for reminding me that we had actually allowed that to lapse. But, so, just very briefly, if you'll indulge me, this started in 2010, which is about the same time as Act 47 and all that kind of thing, right? So it's when we downsized our own department that we went to outsourcing these collections, or no? Is that-
47 was 2004, if I remember correctly.
So why the move to Jordan? Did we used to just do this in-house, or was it a different vendor?
Well, that was a move because of Act 32, which was a change in the way the collection of the earned income was done.
For this one? And then what about the property tax delinquencies?
The property tax delinquencies was a cooperation agreement between Jordan, well, it was, it was an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county and the school district to collect the-
So as, so as we weren't all three separately trying to collect delinquencies?
Yeah, the three taxing.
It was a kind of consolidation thing?
Correct.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So are you still confident that this is the right way for us to collect these earned income taxes?
I believe so. They, like I said, they've been doing a very good job at collecting them. I don't know, Fran, you know a little bit about it, you think?
I don't have a problem with them. They're very cooperative when we need to get information from them, especially if we're doing law claims, because we don't have access to any of that information anymore, but we send them an email, they're, we need to get back to them.
Fran, could you pull the microphone a little closer, please? Thanks.
They've also discovered a lot of new businesses in the city. Anytime they receive any of that information, they send it to us.
There really is, there actually, I can attest, we've all talked about how many new businesses there are and how business districts are changing, so that's very interesting. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have today. Appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else for first round?
I just, Councilwoman Gross was asked a question. I was curious. Why did we go to Jordan originally? Because we couldn't, we didn't have the resources to collect our taxes? And what happened, before 2010, we collected our own? Is that right?
Collected them on our own. When the state changed the law, what had happened, it was a bid, we had to bid on the collections. And we bid against the Jordan Tax, and I think it was another company, but Jordan Tax wanted to bid.
We had to bid to collect our own taxes?
Collect our own taxes, yes.
Did we bid on it?
We did bid on it.
And we lost the bid?
We lost the bid.
Is that right? And what does that come out to be, 1% roughly, dollars, to Jordan?
I don't have that exact figure. I could send it to you.
Yeah, I mean, you don't even have a guesstimation. Were we talking millions, or were we talking, one percent of?
Yeah. Yeah, the revenue, I don't have the revenue thing in front of me. You're not sure either, you don't have it. I have to send it to you, Councilwoman.
Okay. You don't have to send it to me, I'm just curious.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else first round? I'm going to take Councilwoman Harris second round.
You talked about the different companies, but how about, you know, those working here that are not from the city for tax collection? Have we been doing anything on that?
I'm not clear on what you're asking, Councilwoman. You said the ones that are not living here in the city, or?
Yeah, they're not city, but they work in the city.
They don't live in the city, but they work in the city.
Correct.
They pay the occupational tax.
Okay. Yes.
And I'm not sure what you're, what else are you asking?
That was the question. Because there's some that do and some that don't, so a few years back, we put up a resolution to collect and try to find out those who do not live in the city that still are not paying the tax.
Currently, if you mind. Currently, we're working on a non-filing program where we have gone into our system, and we've identified people that have not paid their tax, their payroll expense tax for a particular, the second quarter of 2019. Letters were sent out to all those businesses. We're in the process of sending out a second letter if they have not responded to the first letter. And we're working our way through that 5,000 accounts to find out, are they still legitimately working in the city? Are they, have they closed their business and never notified us? So we are working-
Okay, you're working on it, but this was years ago that we put this in place. I'd have to pull up the legislation on it, and what have we collected?
Our rate of collection on occupational tax is good.
From outside? I'm talking about the outside.
Something that we can show when we have our council hearing discussion, our revenues.
Okay, is Jordan working on that part two?
No, Jordan does not collect the local service tax.
So this city is just sending out?
Correct.
Okay. And at this time, say in the last 10 years, what has a city collected year by year? Extra?
We, our collections are up. Like I said, I don't have the, my revenue report in front of me, but that's something that we can discuss at our hearing, because we will be discussing revenues.
Yeah, if you could break that up, and then a question I had before on both taxes. Break it up, and give me the last five years.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I'd like the record to reflect. Councilwoman Kell Smith has joined us.
Yeah, I'd like to register an abstention on all the votes I missed while I was out. I'll vote final vote next week. Thank you.
Sure. Is there anyone else wishing discussion on 2275 then? Councilman Coghill.
Just a simple, when Jordan fails to collect, you know, say, delinquent taxes, they're only paid 1% on the actual, what they actually collect, right? Okay.
They take theirs off the top of collections.
Right. And let me ask you this, do they have a representative? I had an issue with a woman who lived in Beachview, and she just felt, yeah, she didn't know where to go. Do they have a representative if there's questions from the public that we can reach out to, or do we reach out to you?
You can reach out to me. We don't have a direct representative. I mean, our office is in contact with Jordan daily.
Okay.
But I do have, you know, the-
Yeah, and you said your communication with them is good, and you're happy with that.
Yeah, my communication with the-
But if I have a customer that like needs questions answered about her taxes, her tax bills, she is to call me, first of all, is what she does. And I am to direct that toward-
To the finance department.
To you, okay. Yes. Okay, yeah, so not Jordan. Jordan, they're just kind of a party player.
If there's a problem, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Thanks, Councilmen. All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? So noted, one abstention from Councilwoman Kell Smith. Next, you're welcome to stay if you wish. I believe the tradition knows that we have to hold the following bills because we have not had our tax public hearing yet.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Director. So, Madam Clerk, may we please have 2276, 77, 78, and 79?
Bill 2276. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Tax Earned Income Declaration and Payment of Taxes, subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2020. Bill number 2277. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes Home Rule Tax Declaration and Payment of Taxes, subsection D, so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2020. Bill number 2278. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Real Tax and Exemptions, Payment Options, Discount and Delinquency Penalties, so as to set the payment discount and delinquent dates for the 2020 fiscal year. Bill number 2279. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Real Property Tax and Exemption Levy Rate on Lands and Buildings by Fixing the Rate of Taxation for 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to hold these bills until said time we have conducted the tax public hearing? Motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
To hold, I'm sorry, to hold, yes. I did, okay. Aye opposed abstentions. Bills are held until such time we hold our annual tax public hearing. Madam Clerk, may we then, are there representatives here for 2280?
That's finance.
Finance, okay, let's go with 2280 then. Could we please have the purpose of 2280, Madam Clerk?
Bill 2280. Resolution authorizing all city departments, in conjunction with the Department of Finance, to enter into a facilities uses agreements for the purpose of permitting groups and individual to rent city-owned facilities for recreational and community-focused activities during the 2020 calendar year. The city shall not charge more than $10,000 per rental agreement.
Motion to approve, or motion, apologies.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and a second, I knew we were going to have discussion on this. So we have a motion on the table, we do have a second. I recognize Councilwoman Gross first. Director, I guess we're going to ask you back?
I'm asking the Director back, yes, please.
Okay. Councilwoman Gross is asking the Director back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So normally, I would suspect that these are just the kinds of leases that we have for like tennis leagues, or, you know, golf clubs, or something like that. It literally says in our text file that the public may or may not be able to see that all city departments are authorized, in conjunction with the Department of Finance, to enter into facilities usage agreements, right? So for, and to rent city-owned facilities for recreational and community-focused activities. And that, but then there is section two that lists that the agreements are deposited into the following accounts, and it itemizes our general fund with, for recreational centers. But then there's a series of trust funds. Facilities Trust Fund, Rad Parks Trust Fund, Mellon Park Tennis Trust Fund, Schilling Park Rink Trust Fund, Senior Citizens Program Trust Fund, and Frick Park Trust Fund. So, Margaret, if you are, or, sorry, Director, if you would just kind of, just run us down so that we're comfortable with what is going on with these kinds of agreements?
This agreement is basically for like the city-owned facilities, like the recreation and community, the bigger facilities that we rent out to the public. And, you know, the money that comes in is deposited into different accounts, and maybe, Jennifer, you can talk about the-
Sure. So say like renting Schilling Park Skating Rink, they do have a party room that we-
They have a birthday party, or something like that.
Exactly, but they actually have their own trust fund that that money, that lease money would go into and be deposited into for use in the rink.
And then how is one permitted to have your birthday party at Schilling Park Ice Rink?
I think they would actually have to reserve it and put a deposit down.
And it's very clearly posted on the website about who to call, how to do it, all that kinds of things.
I believe so.
Similarly, something like the tennis, the Mellon Park Tennis, it's where the bubble is.
Right.
Right, near Fifth Avenue.
Right, and the same thing with the shelters, because some of them are designated as ARAD shelters that receive monies to maintain them, and so that money goes back into that budget line when they're rented.
Directly, absolutely, and there's no other third party intermediating between the citizen who wants to have a league or meet or practice at the tennis bubble, and they just clearly are calling our permits office and, or renting it online maybe now, if we've gotten online. So even with the online rentals, that money just directly goes into that Schilling Park, or the Mellon Park Trust Tennis Trust Fund.
When you rent online, it is designated to go into those specific accounts.
Okay, and none of those charges would be more than $10,000. And again, there would be like no other party that is involved in the decision-making about who's renting what, or any other funds that are going to any other places. So this is, we've been doing this year, every year, there's never been any problem with it. And then those trust fund dollars are there because of the, you know, wear and tear on the facilities, I suppose, right? These are very high-usage facilities, almost loved by everybody in the public.
Yep.
All right. I mean, I'm very comfortable with this, I just wanted to kind of draw special attention because we are authorizing for these agreements. Does council have a file of these agreements, Madam Clerk? No?
They'd also made a copy tomorrow.
Okay, so how does a member of the public or city council, if we wanted to read these agreements, where would they be?
Probably in the individual departments to where they were actually leased from.
But we're not sure?
We would sign off on them, but they actually handle the renting of the facilities for the most part.
So it goes into a department someplace?
Well, most of it, if they were the skating rinks, say, or tennis bubble, it would probably go to DPW.
So probably DPW, can we find out?
Yep.
And then...
Or parks. And law would not have a copy.
Is there a master list of agreements, and so that we know that there are agreements, and then which department houses those agreements? Is there kind of a catalog of agreements?
Would be great.
Excuse me?
We could find all...
You know there is? No, there is not? Or you don't know?
Yeah, I don't know for sure. I would assume that would, law would have a copy of the agreements.
Okay, and I'm not to blurb the point, but we do have someone from DPW here, so Marcel, would you like to come up? Thank you, Assistant Director.
Oh, Marcel, good morning.
I didn't know you were there, I wasn't looking. I feel like they're always on the hot seat.
Just introduce yourself for us, since you've been to the table this morning.
Hi, I'm Marcel Newman, Assistant Director in Public Works.
Marcel.
Thank you so much. So I was just talking about like, so how do we even know what agreements there are and who's keeping track of them?
For shelter rentals, ice skating rentals, those are just the permits, those are the agreements.
Got it.
So, the, anyone who is, you know, goes online and rents it, that permit is their agreement.
That's fantastic. So since they've either filled out a form at the permits office, or have gone onto the city website, there is a log?
Yes.
That if were requested?
Yes.
Would be available.
Of course.
Excellent, excellent. And that's all the questions I had, really. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. I have Councilwoman Harris followed by Councilwoman Kail Smith, I believe, correct? I didn't see other hands down there, right? Okay.
Okay. General fund, what would that be for?
The general fund?
Yeah, you have general fund facility...
That's the majority of the revenue that comes into the city, goes into the general fund, then it's put into whatever...
Or rec centers. So would any of this have to do with any of our parks as far as softball, baseball?
So are you asking, does the money that comes in from the softball and the baseball goes into the general fund?
It's categorized as rec centers under general fund. And then there's a facilities trust fund, and rad, Mellon Park, Schilling Park, senior, and Frick. So there's line items for each of those, so I would like to know which is which, and who's collecting what. And a very important question is, do, do we watch for those that don't live in the city using our facilities and damaging homes, or that, by using our facilities, such as And how does one get money back when their car's damaged, or their home's damaged? Would, I don't know who these line items are under. Can you maybe find out for me and get me some information on that? Because I'm concerned. I know when we used the ballparks, and it's our residents, usually they know what size ball they can use in those parks, so they're not the imaging property. But those from the outside do what they want. And I think there has to be some more control out there, you know, and those from the communities should, little leagues and that. I remember when they didn't pay, they shouldn't really be paying to use the ballparks if they live in the city. Or the school district, are you collecting any money from the school district for these parks because of the utilize them? Actually, we go back and forth, we use school district, and school district uses ours. Can you get me information on if that's still what we're doing, and what the amount is and the categories? And really, I think we need to do something to make sure that it's fair to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, all the way around, whether there's damage being done, or our children are using the fields, and not just these adults that are paying, what, $20 an hour, and leaving all their beer cans and everything hanging out. And our seniors, that's another concern. Are, I know each senior group used to collect their own money and hold their money. Are they getting a statement every month on their money? And if there's any interest, is that going to our seniors? And what is the interest coming since we got into that? And are the seniors, as the president, the secretarian, are they able to make the decisions, not just who works there, because it is their money? Is the city throwing anything in for them? That's the other question. So, if you can't remember, I can go over with you. Okay, but it is, you know, when it comes to the rad parks or the facilities, facilities And then there's a line for just general fund, so it goes in there. Can you put it in categories? I'd appreciate that. Okey-dokey. I know I'm catching you all off-guard with this today, but I would like to know. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. I have Councilwoman Kail Smith next.
Did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to be really brief, but, you know...
Go ahead, because I'm not going to be...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to ask you this. Do any of these facilities turn a profit that we lease or that we rent? Do they pay for themselves?
It's hard to tell, because it all goes into the general fund. Most of it goes. For example, the rad shelters, we may know a little bit more about them, because we know where they're depositing, but all others are...
But for the most part, it just helps out. It really doesn't pay the bills there, and we probably have to support it through Public Works or whatever, I would think. Okay, thanks.
And it has to be renewed each year.
Thank you. Okay. Back in order to Councilwoman Kail Smith.
So I just want to, thank you, and I just want to say, first of all, none of this is, I think it's unfair to have all of you at the table to talk about this, because we really need Law Department, we really need Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, we really need DPW, and including the Director. And I appreciate you all being here, but I'm not going to sit here and belabor this, I'm just going to say I have concerns. I think when we talk about capping the rental at $10,000, and yet we just got done with the campaign that's talked about how we're going to make our parks affordable for all, and we're going to make sure we take care of it, I mean, it's hypocrisy at its finest. I mean, I don't know many residents in the city of Pittsburgh that can afford a cap at $10,000, even at $5,000, to rent a facility in a public space. And I mean, these places may be great, and they may be beautiful, and they may be worth every dime, but they're still public property. And so I just overall have some concerns with even the suggestion of capping it at $10,000. I also disagree that the agreements that we're, that Councilwoman Gross is talking about is online and in the part of the lease agreement. That's an agreement between the person renting it and DPW, it's not the agreements that we want to see between Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and the city of Pittsburgh.
Very different.
And other, so I want to make sure people, those are very different. And so I think when we talk about all this stuff and having transparency, I mean, those are the things that people want to see, they want to see those agreements between Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, or any private, you know, entity that we have working in the city of Pittsburgh. We have a lot right now. And there's a lot of times, I mean, public-private partnerships are great, but not when they're starting to privatize our departments. And that's what it seems that we're getting very close to doing with many of our departments. And the creation of DOMI, which I love DOMI, I love the Director, I also think that that was a way to start whittling away at what's happening at DPW. And so I think that we're getting very close to some of these things that make me, raise my level of concern. I'm going to abstain today, I think I'm going to talk to my colleagues about this, but, you know, I just want to thank all of you for your work, and I feel badly that you're sitting here at the table having to, you know, answer questions that maybe you didn't put in place, the work that's in place, the agreements and everything in place. You're here to collect the money and do some of the things that you do, issue permits and whatever. And so I apologize that you're here, having to answer this, and I think the next time, I think we should have some conversations over this week with the administration, with the Law Department, with the others that we talked about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First round, anyone else? I'm going to take just a brief moment on first round. As an example, someone wishes to use the first floor of the city-county building to have their wedding. Is that something that's covered under this as well, this building included, or facilities are separate from the city-county building, and it would not cover any action that might take place in here? And if you need to tell me, you can tell me later.
I would probably go through the, yeah, special events, right?
Yeah, so we wouldn't be considering this building per se a facility? That's okay, we can talk offline about it, I just had a thought, you know, come into mind that... Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to go into second round then, and we're going to recognize Councilwoman Harris.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear for the general fund piece, that whatever lines you have there, that the money is coming in. I'd like to know how much for the last five years, and some kind of explanation. Also, I said before, and I'm still in the vote, on the Parks Trust Fund, that's the hidden tax that was voted on, and I don't think half the people understood. So, yeah, I don't see it on this list yet for 2020, and I guess we'll see if that's voted up, or it's voted done, whether we're charging the residents more tax on their property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, without further discussion then, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
I'm going to, for this one, I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so we're taking the vote. Two abstentions, as noted. Thank you very much for being with us this morning.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Twenty-two eighty-one is next, this needs to be held with the budget bills as well too. Madam Clerk, may we please have the purpose of twenty-two eighty-one?
Bill twenty-two eighty-one, resolution authorizing the fee schedule for 2020 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the city code.
Thank you. May I have a motion then to hold one week? Motion to hold. One week.
Is it one week?
One week, and we're holding them a week at a time during budget, according to our budget director.
Oh, I thought that would be held till the tax hearing, to know.
Ask for vote?
Okay, I'm just, we're getting out there in the weeds. So have a motion to hold one week in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed abstentions. Thank you. Twenty-two eighty-one is held for one week. We have the invoices, if I may have a motion on the invoices, please? So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the invoices. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions. Invoices passed. Next, we have interdepartmental transfers. If I may have a motion on the interdepartmental transfers? So moved. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions. They pass. Finally, we have P-cards on the table as well, if I may have a motion on the P-cards. So moved.
Second discussion.
Second, with discussion, Councilwoman Harris has the floor, and...
Good morning. Again. Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to state your name again?
I'm Bill Urbannick, City Council Budget Director.
Thank you. Under PLI, it asks for two memberships here. Who would those memberships be for?
I will need to get back to you on it, I don't have that information in front of me.
And what? Because I understand that the Director is leaving, so I'm just wondering, you know, who the memberships are for.
Yeah, no problem, that's most likely in our receipts there, invoices.
Okay, I'm just going to abstain on this one.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 opposed abstentions. One abstention from Councilwoman Harris is noted. Thanks, Bill, appreciate it. We completed the Public Safety Committee, this takes us into the Public Works Committee. Councilwoman Kail Smith is our chair. Madam Clerk, may I begin under new papers with twenty-two ninety-two, please?
Bill twenty-two ninety-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with CDR Maguire, Inc., for project design, management services, and reviews in connection with various city construction projects, including central business district signals, south side signals, Liberty Avenue, Windsor Avenue, Carnahan Road Bridge Construction, Penn Avenue, Smithville Street, West Ohio Street Bridge, McFerran Bridge, South Negley Bridge, Twenty-Eighth Street Bridge, Swineburn Bridge, Charles Anderson Bridge, utilizing previously appropriated funds in the amount of $570,778.99, and newly appropriated funds in the amount of $622,530.66, for a total not to exceed $1,193,309.65.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion, Councilwoman?
Motion to approve.
In a second, Councilwoman, you have the floor. Do we have discussion? Nope, we're good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed abstentions. Twenty-two ninety-two passes. May I please have the purpose of twenty-two ninety-three then?
Bill twenty-two ninety-three, resolution, amending resolution number seven oh eight, locating right-ofways and accepting the dedication of roadways, which are part of the Convention Center roadway improvement, phases one through three, and vacating a portion of Tenth Street adjacent to the David L. Lawrence Convention Center, which is no longer used for roadway purposes by adding additional coordinates under description three.
Councilwoman?
Motion to approve.
Second. Do we have discussion? Councilwoman Harris, is that...
Yes, I guess this is a question for Lavelle, if he's still here, Lavelle? Is this, oh, this is by the Convention Center, this isn't up the other way. Never mind, I'm fine.
Then, without further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions. Forgive me, twenty-two ninety-three passes. That takes us into our Committee on Economic Development, and our Chair, Councilwoman Gross.
Bill twenty-two twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to receive $80,000 grant award per agreement between the city and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources executed 5/15/19, to support the development of an Emerald View Park master plan, and to further enter into an agreement to hire consultants, Merritt Chase, to develop aforementioned master plan with additional city expenditures, local match not to exceed $55,000, for a total contract value not to exceed $135,000.
Motion to approve, a discussion?
Second. Okay. Defering, Councilwoman, to Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just really want to hold this, and I think that I did meet with city planning, I'm okay with mostly everything. I think that because council has some concerns about the agreements with the Parks Conservancy, and what's in writing, what's not, and would want to do some type of an audit of those existing contract agreements, I think that we're going to hold this until we know exactly who's going to be involved in this project, and whether there'll be another agreement, and how that agreement plays into the current agreement. Did you want to say something?
No.
No, I really don't want you to, I'm going to hold it. My whole thing is that we, we know that this is not the part of the work, this is for the consultant, we understand that. But we also know that there's agreements in place for Emerald View Park already with Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, and including the Grand View Avenue's part. So I think wanting to look at those agreements, and how those agreements will play into any future work happening there, or future agreements, now that we have a tax in place. So I think we want to make sure that we are looking at this through a lens that gives us the whole picture, not just one quick contract. Thank you.
Councilwoman, may I ask you one, just one quick question? Are we in jeopardy of losing the grant if we continue to hold?
I don't care.
That's my only question. It's $135,000 to leave on the table.
You know what? And there's been a lot of money going out of this place to organizations over and over again, and I think at some point, we've got to say, we're not willing to jeopardize, you know, our public dollars, just because we might lose a grant.
So...
At some point, you've got to make a stand. And so I'm saying, I'm saying for me, this is about our residents, and having, making sure that they have clear, a clear idea with the processes and what we're doing going forward.
So I'll just ask my question again, are we at risk of losing the grant? Do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the table is to hold one week with a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed abstentions. Okay, we're going to hold one week. That completes our Economic Development Committee, takes us into our Urban Recreation Committee, with Councilman Coghill as the Chair.
Bill twenty-two eighty-two, resolution, amending resolution number six eleven, which authorizes an agreement with Clean Net Systems of Pennsylvania, Inc., for the purpose of providing custodial and cleaning services at city parks, recreation, and healthy acts of living senior centers, by increasing the cost from $976,222 to $1,036,222.
Motion for a brief discussion.
Second. I'm sorry.
Motion for a brief discussion.
Oh, great. Motion and a second with discussion, Councilman, you have the floor.
You know, I'm going to defer to Councilman O'Connor.
Good morning, welcome. We make it difficult for you guys to get up here, don't we? And Councilman, you have the floor.
Okay, so just a quick question. So, when I was Chair of Parks, we passed, three years ago, we passed a feminine product bill at all of our centers. And I'm just, and reading this, it doesn't say anything about placing those, I mean, this is just, this is cleaning and maintenance and custodial work, but it doesn't say anything about having them stocked with feminine products. And we passed the bill. So.
Should we, good morning, Ross Javon, Director of City Parks. It's all right, good morning, Councilman.
So I just, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so.
Can we add that to the bill? I mean, we're already paying.
The reason that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not in the contract, yeah.
Right, so the RFP is out now for the cleaning services. Luann was part of the vendor process four years ago. It was pretty intense, I think nineteen bids perhaps?
Yes, we had nineteen bids.
So we were in a position where the contract was up December seventh, I think, this year. So we've extended it through the end of February of 2020 with the current cleaning service. So when the bid, when the proposals come back, I guess in a couple of weeks, then we'll go through the valuation process. Councilman, there is no provision in the cleaning contract that I'm aware of that would facilitate this. But aside from, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Just, yeah, there's other contracts that have it in there.
Yeah.
And it's meant, it's for the purpose of parks and public facilities.
Absolutely.
So if you can have it added to it, or talk to the contractor before we, I mean, obviously, we're going to approve it today, but maybe before Tuesday, if they can do that, because there's other contracts that have that already in place, and this one didn't. That was my only thing.
Sure, I can check with Public Works. My understanding was that something was going to happen via Public Works that was going to facilitate the installation of those products outside of this cleaning contract. I'm not.
Okay, yeah, if you can check on that, because we've asked that, and we weren't really sure, but if there's a contract, you know, we're going to pay it.
Sure.
If it's a couple thousand dollars, we might as well do it. So that's it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Councilwoman Harris, is that?
Yes. How many centers do we have now?
Ten rec centers, thirteen senior centers. Those include two of the satellite centers in the Housing Authority locations. If you throw in our aquatics facilities, there's eighteen swimming pools. There's one indoor swimming pool. There's eight spray parks.
How about, how about listing them for me in their names? Give me that.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Okay. And then how often are we cleaning?
It's been five days a week, largely, at each one of our centers.
And the swimming pools and everything?
No, ma'am.
Okay, just let me know.
Sure.
On each, I appreciate it, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. So with Councilwoman Strasburger.
Apologies if this was already asked or answered, but what is accounting for the increase? Is it more staff, or is it an increase in pay to the?
It's just an extension of the contract, because the contract ended on December seventh, and there was no way for the RFP to go out, my understanding, and come back in and be vetted in time before the conclusion of the end of the current contract. So we're extending it into February, at which point.
Oh, oh, I see. So that's, that accounts for the one-twenty to one-eighty. It's not that it's going to be, it's just an extension of.
Correct, yeah, we, I think no one is, we're not quite sure what the proposals will come back. When they do come back, Public Works is going to assume the financial piece for management of the contract relative to the, for the rec center. So like they manage other cleaning contracts, they'll manage that one as well. They'll take it out of our, it will not be part of our fiscal budget line item anymore.
I hope it don't look as bad as up here.
I'm sorry?
I hope it don't look as bad as up here.
Well, I, we expect, I mean, Lou's talked about this before, but we expect there to be quite a few vendors that respond. So I think it'll be a lengthy vetting process, and I think that's why the extension was necessary.
Okay. Councilwoman Strasburger, you okay? Okay, good. So without further discussion then, on twenty-two eighty-two, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion passes. Thanks for being with us this morning. Have a good day.
Yep.
That will take us into our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee with Councilwoman Strasburger as our Chair.
Bill twenty-two ninety-four, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Zones LLC, sole source reseller for the annual renewal of OTRS, goal support in an amount of ten thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-nine cent, to provide commercial support, consulting, and development services for the open source service used by IT Service Management, customer service, and help desk, as provided to the Department of Innovation and Performance.
And so, woman?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, do we have discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, twenty-two ninety-four passes. That takes us in our, into our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, our last committee of the morning, with Councilman O'Connor as our Chair.
Bill twenty-two eighty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Department of Public Works to enter into a corporation agreement with Tree Pittsburgh for the purpose of supporting Tree Pittsburgh's effort to promote and advance the City of Pittsburgh Urban Forest Master Plan.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to thank the Tree, yeah, I just want to thank Tree Pittsburgh, because, I mean, they've done so much in, all across the City of Pittsburgh. And they're one of the agreements and partnerships that I actually really appreciate.
Exactly, I just wanted to say the same thing.
And Tree, by the way.
This is definitely a cooperative agreement to, you know, for the city to work with a nonprofit corporation that is doing things above and beyond what we've been able to do without their help, and they do a fantastic job, and my neighborhoods have greatly benefited.
I just have to make sure that the agreement is online, that people can see these agree. I just think that all the agreements should be online and available for people to see.
It's supposed to be.
Well, I don't know if it is or isn't. I'm just saying, I want to make sure I'm the same, I'm consistent in my request. I think everything should be public, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Just, if I may take my turn. Oh, no, thank you. We're presently, as we speak, planting seventy-seven new trees on East Carson Street.
Wow.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's an exciting time. Thank you all very much. So a motion and a second, and no further discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, twenty-two twenty-seven passes. Madam Clerk, may we have the purpose of twenty-two eighty-eight?
Bill twenty-two eighty-eight, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights, title and interest of any into the publicly owned properties in the Eighteenth Ward, designated in the D-Registerie Office, Council District Three, Residential Rehab to Housing, eight hundred nine nineteen and nine twenty-four, Eureka Street.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Yeah, thank you.
If you could please come.
Could we have you come up, please? Just a brief overview. These are some properties the URA wishes to acquire for rehab. I thought I had a second, didn't I have a second?
Second.
I thought, thank you. Good morning, welcome. I'm, I'm fine with this, but if you could just, if you would please, just for the edification of council, talk a little bit about the URA acquiring these properties to dispense for rehabilitation.
Sure.
No, 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 it's in.
Hi, my name is M.L. Meyer, and I work in the URA's Real Estate Department. And we're seeking authorization to have these three vacant structures on Eureka Street in Allentown. We're seeking authorization to have these conveyed to the URA for conveyance to our affiliate, the Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation, for residential rehab for resale.
Yep, that's what we're doing here. I just wanted to put it out there. But forgive me, I thought Hilltop Alliance was a conduit in some way, correct?
Yes, in, in cooperation with Hilltop Alliance.
Yeah, yeah, I'm perfectly good with this. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to come up and explain it. Councilwoman?
Thank you. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we had a post agenda on vacant properties some weeks ago, and the Chair wishes me not to talk about this?
No, oh, no, no, no.
Okay, just checking. And so it was acknowledged by the Finance Department and the Real Estate Department, the city employees, we didn't have anyone from the URA there, that of the fourteen thousand or so properties that are actually city-owned, that are called our inventory, that there was some seven thousand of them that the URA has flagged for redevelopment. And then additionally, of the, outside of that fourteen thousand, another, you know, estimated thirteen thousand or so of tax delinquent properties that also exist in the city, so that's a total of twenty-seven thousand, of that additional delinquent list that the city has not yet acquired, that when a citizen calls real estate, here, again, in the city, not the URA, to acquire a property, that they pick up the phone and call the Housing Authority and the URA to say like, are you sure you don't want this one? So in fact, giving the URA veto power. So I just want to make sure today we don't have to get into that discussion all over again. That is not what's happening here. So the Councilwoman has a project that he's very comfortable with, that is, has financing in place, just like we do, to a private citizen trying to buy a vacant property. You have the capacity to do this project?
Right.
There is financing in place. You're sure that people have the technical skills and know how to actually do the rehabilitation that is being prospected. It has community support, and it certainly has the councilman's support. And so I just wanted to point out that I couldn't let it go unacknowledged, that there seems to be a problem with thousands upon thousands of vacant properties citywide that are intended by someone somewhere for redevelopment, that haven't been redeveloped, some of them for decades. So having said that, I'm fully supportive of this item. Happy to support it, Councilman.
It helps tremendously to have the guidance of Hilltop Alliance as well.
I'm really looking forward to see more about the work that they're doing. I think it's really exciting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Thank you. I just want to say that I actually called for that post agenda, and Councilwoman Gross chaired for me, so I want to thank her, because I called for jury duty the night before. You have to call after five for jury duty, see if you have to show up, and I had to show up. So Councilwoman Gross, at the last minute, was so gracious, and I heard she did a spectacular job. I watched part of it, she did a great job. But I want to say my concern has not been in, in our area. It's been with CDC's holding on to the properties for years. And it's supposed to be that if they get the property from the treasury sale, it's supposed to be, something has to be done within two years, and it never seems like that happens in a lot of the, in a lot of the properties that are held in our area. And so I just think that we need to make sure, and we've talked about this, I mean, the land bank is supposed to be doing more, the URA's working together, you know, with us and the land bank. I just really feel like I have a lot of concerns about the land bank and some of the things we're doing in terms of housing in general. But I just, I do think that the URA is somebody that we can hold accountable for the most part, even though we're not exactly giving the money this year, and we're not exactly on the, on the board or anything, but we do have some representation there, and they are more public. But I don't think that we have that same kind of control over the private groups that are, that purchasing property. And we have a lot of them in our area, especially in the Mount Washington area, that residents have concerns with, you know, what's going on with some of the properties. So I think that when we move forward and we talk about these properties, and I do think we need to come up with something quicker, and if the, if the land bank is not going to be that answer, then we have to sit down and talk with the administration about what will be, because we've been working on the land bank now for three years. And I think now we're getting ready to hire an executive director, which might be much more helpful. I think that's what we really need, to have, you know, somebody who's working on it full-time. But I think that there's, you know, a lot of funding issues regarding that. So I think that we're working through some of those things, but I think we don't give it, you know, indefinite amount of time. We, we have to really review this again. But I do, I think the URA is, I like working with the URA, because I think that we can work with them and hold them accountable more than I can some of the groups. I just want to say that. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you members for comment. Without further discussion then, on twenty-two eighty-eight, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion passes, thank you. Are you here for twenty-two eighty-nine as well?
The Councilman's supportive, so we don't.
He is supportive?
Yeah.
Because I don't have communication from him. So he does wish us to pass this today. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the purpose of twenty-two eighty-nine then, please?
Bill twenty-two eighty-nine, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest of any into the publicly owned properties in the Twelfth Ward, Council District Nine, Institution Expansion, sixty-five thirteen Meadow Street.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second, please?
I think that was it.
The dog seconds.
Second.
And Councilman Burgess wishes to see this move forward, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion passes. Thank you very much, appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much for your work.
And our final bill of the day, twenty-two ninety, Madam Clerk?
Bill twenty-two ninety, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an amended and restated Corporation and Support Agreement between the city and the Allegheny Regional Asset District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please, motion and a second. Do you wish discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kail Smith wishes discussion, and we have representatives from the administration here. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Kevin, Director.
Kevin Pauls, Director, Office of Management and Budget.
I just want to know, do we have a copy of this?
Yes, we can get you a copy. It's not finally executed or anything, but once it is executed, we can get you that. If you would like to see it before then, we can certainly.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain today, because I'd like to see it before, because I wonder what I'm voting on.
Basically, what it is, is it's our yearly allocation, sets a minimum funding level that we, the city receives from the Allegheny Regional Asset District Board, that gets split up between the RAD trust funds in our budget, both for GPW and parks, for any and all expenses related to a RAD park, which is Shendly Highland, Riverview, Frick, and Emerald View.
Is it attached to the legislation here?
The agreement?
Right.
No, we can get you a copy of that.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to abstain today, and I'll wait until I get the copy, see the copy.
Okay.
Not that I know.
You good?
So it's actually ready to be signed, the cop agreement? It says that it's already amended?
We have the amended version, or we have the restated amended.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, did you have something to say?
The chair recognizes, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have the restated amended copy of the agreement. It has not been signed by any parties yet. It was just, we're looking for the authorization to enter into this agreement that would be for five years, from 2020 to 2024.
Okay, so we can attach the draft by Tuesday even.
We can get you the draft.
That'd be fantastic. All right, I'm supportive, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, without further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? We have one abstention from Councilwoman Kail Smith and one from Councilwoman Harris. That concludes the agenda for the day. I do have some brief meeting announcements. Our budget hearings begin this afternoon at 1:30 with the Departments of Parks and Recreation, hosted by Councilman Coghill, why am I stumbling over you today? And then Mobility and Infrastructure, hosted by Councilwoman Kail Smith. Also this afternoon, with sessions beginning at 3:00 and 3:30, council is being briefed as it relates to the Lower Hill PDT. Budget hearings will continue Thursday, November 21 at 10:00 a.m. with public safety, all departments. That will be hosted by Councilman Lavelle. And then 1:30, permits, licenses, and inspections would be chaired by, forgive me, Councilwoman Gross.
I'm not going to help you, you figure it out for yourself.
Councilwoman Gross, are you going to be late tomorrow or something? Did I hear something about that? No. Okay. All right, and then due to our Thanksgiving holiday next week, both councils' regular and standing committee meetings are held Monday, November 25, respectively at 10:00 and 1:30 p.m. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes. I watched Channel 11 last night, and I don't know about anybody else on council, if you've seen it or not, but it talked about Al Qasian and having someone, it's on the Megan's Law list, working down there. They do have like after-school activities, they have a number of things for children. No one that has children or wants to work with children should hire anyone, anyone that is on that list. You know, it sometimes takes 10 or 20 or 30 children before something actually goes to court. And if you think it's over by then, you know, take another look. And I don't want to see any child harmed for a lifetime, whether it be with this city or be with Al Qasian or PWSA or any of them. If you have children's programs, then you don't have child molesters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
I just briefly want to talk about Councilwoman Gross, Harris, and Councilman Coghill and I put in legislation yesterday, or some resolutions, to talk about what we'd like to see happen with the parks. And, you know, I just want to make this clear on my end, that my concern with the parks is regarding this tax and the way that this whole campaign played out. And the things that did not occur that I understand should have occurred in the past with some of these, with the conservancy. And so I just want to say for me, this is not an anti, you know, mayor or an anti-parks effort. This is me saying I'm concerned about what we've just did, I'm concerned about what we're doing and what the precedence was that was set this week, you know, during the election, that any nonprofit could decide that they want to run a really expensive campaign and then turn around a tax or residence. I'm concerned about how this might be a way to start privatizing some of our departments, even though I've spoken repeatedly to Chief Estef Gilman, he assures me that's not the case. And I have, I mean, he's been very good to our area, I have no reason to distrust that. It's just something that I just feel very concerned about, and just overall, about how the various departments, not just this, not just parks, but just seeing how things have been whittled away and responsibilities and stuff. It raises a concern. So I just want to say for me, the concern is what this means for our residents, what this means for taxpayers, and, you know, how we're going to hold people accountable. And that council has a voice, because once you start cutting out council, you're cutting out the voice of the people. And I've said that repeatedly for multiple things that we do here, that our voice is their voice. You may not, if you don't agree with us, you have an avenue to come talk to us, you have a way to discuss things with us. But I don't like that, you know, sometimes when you come out and you start talking about the things and concerns, you're painted, you know, as either anti-administration or anti-parks or anti, you know, partnerships or anti-foundations or anti... I'm not anti-anybody, I'm pro-people. I'm for our people, I'm for our residents. And that's what my focus is always going to be. And if it makes people feel uncomfortable and people don't like us questioning, then I apologize, but I'm not going to ever stop doing what I think my people elected me to do. My district did not vote for this tax, Councilman Coghill's area did not vote for this tax. But they will pay it because a bulk of the taxes come from southwest of the river. I don't think people realize that. And so I think that we will see a lot of that money. I do think we are going to see it because just the park plans that we have in place and coming up and working with the administration. I think for my area, we have seen more money, we've never seen this kind of money and this kind of investment in our area in decades. And I don't care who doesn't, you know, agree with that, I see the dollars and I know the projects that are coming up. So I work really well with the administration and I really resent anybody trying to minimize a concern of the public and wrapping it up as to something as a personal vendetta or a personal, or a personal agenda instead of a public agenda. It's really very much for the public that we sit here and put ourselves in these positions and talk about concerns. And so I think we're going to really, if anything, I'm going to, I resent the resistance so much that it's making me question even more. So I'll just say that. And I don't think, I don't think those people who don't know me before I got here don't know what a great organizer and fighter I really am, but they're about to find out.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, for both participating with the legislation and for your words here. Similarly, I think it's important for people to understand that even the letters that I got and the discussion among my constituents who are both for or against the tax, many of them said, called on council to do its job and called on council to have this discussion and called on myself and council members to look into these agreements. So this is the job of this table and no other. And it's, I think, raised a lot of curiosity among our constituents that we've had this beginning of a conversation, that we continue this conversation. And as we saw on today's agenda, some of these agreements and cooperative agreements or leases are very simple and straightforward and for small amounts of money and expire annually. But then there are others that do not, that are neither in full public light, that have not been fully vetted, that are for unknown sums of money and do not expire annually, right? And so it's, I think, very important for us to put them all on the table and see if we're all comfortable or we're not all comfortable. Every single one of us, especially those cooperative agreements, is the city doing less operations and the outside partner organization doing more operations. And in many of them, there is also an exchange of dollars or a redirecting of public dollars. And so that is also really critical to put all on the table so that we can all be sure that we are comfortable with it and the public can see them as well and be heard and have time to understand them. So I think that we're at the beginning of the conversation and this is the work of city council doing its job.
I'll be quick.
Councilwoman Coghill?
Yes, I'll be quick. You know, all that noise as far as we start in trouble, I don't pay any attention to that. I think collectively, those of us who met, we know it's the right thing. I think we're at a critical stage in local government, in the way of this. The precedents had been set. This isn't set in the precedents. The precedents has been set when the Childcare Act, and you can go back to the library tax for that matter, if you wanted to, but that was mandated by the state, different. In this case, it was successful, the vote passed. I think the critical stage now is what we decide where we are going to allocate that money and who's going to have say-so in that. I believe if it does not stay completely in the public's hands, 501(c)(3)'s are lining up. They see this and anybody with deep pockets, I'll use animal rescue for an example, I use them because I know I can create some great commercials for puppies and put a patch on their eye and make them whimper, okay? And we can solicit probably more taxpayer money through that. For somebody to spend a million dollars to try to extort, I call extort, taxpayer money, it's very important. So I think local government, as we see it, and I think it's going to be important for us to make sure that we allocate that money in the proper way, that the public sees that it's the public that can, you know, have a say-so on it. Or we open up Pandora's Box and, you know, I believe there will be 501(c)(3)'s, why wouldn't they? It's simple, I mean, spend a million dollars, pick the right election cycle, try to, you know, get the best commercials out there and fund your organization through the taxpayer money forever. So I believe in the future, if we don't do this correct now, we're going to see property tax on our tax bills right next to the library tax, then we're going to see park tax, and then we're going to see animal rescue tax. It can go on and on and on. I just think it's so critical for that, and that's why I'm stepping up and doing this, besides the fact that I believe this tax money, we could have raised taxes for many things. Parks are very important, nobody's against parks, but I've got more important pressing needs in my district and 70% of my voters voted against it, and I think for good reasons, so.
So I'm actually going to join this conversation. Go ahead. Well, some of us were invited to join a larger conversation, some of us were not. I don't remember being invited into the larger.
Can I respond?
Nope, let me have my say. So it's really important to reiterate that first and foremost, regardless of where we fall in, it was the democratic process which we are arguing to protect, that a public at large wished to see this. Some people are happy with the results, some people are not happy with the results. Allow me, okay? Please, can I? Thank you. I had the courtesy to give you your piece, allow me to have mine. So what I was really interested in was the day after, how the Post Gazette broke down Ward and District. And I went through Ward and District and what was really surprising to me to see, that even though the third council district did vote in its entirety to support, but by a narrow margin, it was really interesting to see how divided even ward to ward was in their decision. So like, and these aren't accurate, I'm paraphrasing, but 16-3 was 70% in favor, 30% opposed. 16-4 was 30% in favor and 70% opposed. There were wild swings in even people that are neighbors living next to one another. But overall, I can't remember the exact margin the third council district voted to support it. I want to be really careful about how we present, or how it is perceived that somehow this was council's idea to do. And some of the conversation puts it out there as if this was, you know, council needs to do their job, we need to do our job. But it was clear that this was a public referendum, and I stress this at the public hearing, that this did not initiate at this council table. It's going to come to this council table because now we have a pot of publicly collected tax dollars that must be allocated by this table. There isn't room for discussion on that. There isn't room for discussion to say, we must do our jobs. That is our job. This will be publicly collected dollars that will come into the city in a trust fund that we will create and we must manage it. There is no room for discussion there, period. That is our job. So money, in the conversations that I've had with members and with the administration, the charter is amended by the act of the vote. Our role is simply to insert the language into code where it exists. Number two is to create a trust fund in which those dollars can be deposited, will be the role of this council to do. We cannot collect tax dollars because we don't have bills, as we heard from Margaret Director Lanier, that the bills can't be prepared to go out, even though the referendum calls for the money to be collected in 2020. Bills can't go out because the bills, the paperwork is not ready to do so. So much like the library tax, that first tax bill will most likely go out probably in the middle part of the year. But in keeping with the timeline of what our responsibility, as I see it for now, is to make official the inserting of the code that the referendum has been amended and to create the trust fund so that when tax is collected, there's a place to put it. But in terms of our desire to see how that money is ultimately over, has oversight, that is clearly our role. And collectively, not individually, I think, as a body, we have a charge presented to us to see exactly how we want to see oversight of those dollars and how they will be distributed through a budgetary process, because they will be public dollars, they will go through the budget process, and they will come to this table. But we have, we have a clear role and a clear authority to establish a process by which we want to see those dollars overseen, if that's the right word I'm looking for. And that, I believe, is a responsibility that we absolutely have to take seriously and that we have to collectively as a body decide how those are going to be, how oversight is going to be. I've said this early, I'm not sure if I said it in a public arena, though, with the library tax, the way the library board is established, there are a number of elected bodies throughout state, county, and city that sit on the board. And so we have regular oversight of those dollars as they come in. And that raises my comfort level with a publicly collected dollar being distributed with clear oversight by elected officials. And we can establish something along those lines here as well, not we can, we should, we must, establish a clear criteria by which we want to see those dollars overseen and distributed in a clear and equitable manner. It is our job.
I just wanted to comment on your remark as far as, you know, some of us were invited to the table. I just think that we got together because we felt most passionate about it. And I fully intend to make the case to the other council members who really, you know, I mentioned to Corey briefly that we were going to try to do something. And, you know, I clearly, and starting next week.
I'll correct my remarks because Councilwoman Gross did reach out to me.
Okay, so, but for that matter, yes, I want this to be our body, all nine of us.
Let us not be divided over this.
No, no, and I don't feel that way. That's why I wanted to respond to that, because, you know, we just, we have to sit down collectively and hopefully we could all make our case and be on the same page, that's what I'm hoping for, including with the Parks Conservancy, including with the mayor's office.
You know, when we sat here with Doug, when Doug was on the council and then Councilman Padilla was on the council, Doug would always make this argument, and it was, he was absolutely right. Nobody took a bigger hit under 47 than kids. You know, we had to close rec centers and parks and programming. And I think we can look at this as a really good opportunity to begin restoring some of those things that were cut under Act 47 and benefit our kids. You know, I think, I can't imagine there's a member sitting here that doesn't want to work to benefit to restoring some rec centers and playgrounds and programming. And so if we can view this as an opportunity to do that, not let it divide us, but rather unite us in ways that we can restore some of these programings, then it's going to be, it won't be for naught. It'll be, you know, it'll be a good outcome. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'll just say that I think that a lot of people took a hit during those years, and I think our public safety department did, I think our DPW did, I think there's a lot of people that took a hit, but people still continue to do their job. And I think that, I think our parks, I want to make this clear, our parks were ranked number 23 out of 100 parks nationally. They did an amazing job all those years, keeping our parks in great shape. So to pretend that our parks are so horrible, after we've touted how great they were for years, and now all of a sudden we're like, we have this hole, I mean, it just doesn't even add up. This was clearly to me, an attempt to help the Conservancy who spends a great deal of their budget, and I think this is a conversation we have to have, they spend a great deal of their budget on personnel. And if they were spending it on the parks, I wouldn't have these concerns. But if we had that kind of money to spend on our personnel, imagine, we'd have a lot less disgruntled employees than we do right now, and we'd get a lot more done in the city. So I think that there's a lot to be said. I mean, this, I want this kumbaya moment and I want to work with my colleagues, but the fact of the matter is, I feel like the taxpayers were almost scammed, you know, because there was somebody with a lot of money, had an opportunity to come in and run a campaign with a lot of money, and nobody had the money to run a counter campaign. And I mean, and I know that in their hearts, they might, everybody wants to do what's right for the parks, but to me, there was a way to do this and this was not the way to do it. To me, the way to do this would have been taking your time, having a conversation, not waiting for an opportune moment when there was not a mayoral race or a presidential race, when we would have a lot of voters coming out. But to actually take the time and do it when you had a big turnout, 20, I think it was around 25% of the voters came out, an eighth of the voters decided to tax the rest of the city. That's a concern. This was not an overwhelming mandate by the public, this barely passed with a million-dollar campaign. And I think, having said that, I have huge concerns, I'm going to have huge concerns. And although, you know, the Parks Conservancy may, there are a lot of great employees there that have put a lot of time in and they do a lot of great work. I'm going to say, I appreciate people like Aaron Tobin and others that do a lot of work in our neighborhoods, actually get down in the dirt and do the work. But this person came in from Minneapolis, and as we're finding out from Minneapolis, there's a lot going on in Minneapolis that we didn't hear about during this campaign, a lot. And so I think as this goes on, this conversation goes on, we're not going to put the pressure and stop the pressure, we're going to keep this pressure up. And we're going to continue to look at what's happening in Minneapolis. We're going to look at the unions and talk to the union people. We're going to look at their council and talk to their council. And we're going to hear from employees and from residents that felt that they did not get what they had thought that they were supposed to get. So I'm not going to ease up. I'll work with my colleagues, I want to make sure we do what's right here, but the pressure is not going to ease up anytime soon.
Okay. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes. I think almost everything was added on to our feelings, but for this to start under the administration and then have a campaign by a campaign manager and millions of dollars going out for television and radio and leaflets and everything else, I think, what was it? Every day we got, "Vote yes, vote yes" in the mail. I mean, I can't imagine how much that had costed. Actually, if that money went into our parks, that could have really helped out a number of our parks. 165, I think they're counting the tot lots in that too, and some of those tot lots were abandoned because of drug use. And that's all they were used for, is drugs. But my understanding is, it's supposed to come in through the, if council votes for it. Because after all that campaigning, it's now in council's hands to do what council feels is right to do for the people, just like the budget comes in and is now the council's to change however the council feels is right. This is, it is a hidden tax hike. That's all it is. And if it goes in a trust fund, it needs to go out of that trust fund into the parks, not changing who works in the parks and, you know, all that, because, you know, that's our people and this money is going to go for the people that are working in the parks, which, as you stated, could have went to public safety or something else, and next year could be something else. I mean, you know, when's it going to stop now with it coming in? And only 16% of the people voted in my district. 16%.
16 or 16?
16.
Okay.
16. Which I was a no vote, and I'm still a no vote, because I don't think this has been done fairly at all. If you want to do a tax hike, you want money going into a general fund or a trust, you know, let it come to this table and let the council, which we still get a vote on, this that was asked for and put on for taxpayers to have a vote. And, I mean, talk about Act 47 and what we've lost out of Act, from Act 47, we're going to be right back in Act 47, if not worse. There's already $200 million that this council has put up in bonds, and they're asking for another $50 million next year to go out. That's also going to hurt our taxpayers, because you have to watch how you're spending the money. And you have to spend the money equally in each district. It's got to go to the west and the south and the north and east fairly, equally and fairly. It should be very equitable. Thank you.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion then to excuse our absent member and adjourn the meeting? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.